Just because the sheer magnitude of it is. So I, again, I'll check with the DBW director and see if he's received those 25% designs and just follow up on the funding.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Yeah, and the only reason I mention that for folks out in, oh, we're on TV now, folks out in the audience, they should be pretty interesting, I think, you know, based on what my last understanding of where that project was headed, it's interesting look into kind of some exciting things this project might do for Summer Street in terms of making the road, improving the road, improving the...
The whole area, really, I mean, yeah, it's really a rejuvenation of the area as opposed to just fixing the road.
Exactly, there's sidewalk, bike walk, there's a little bit of streetscape, should be safety visual, whatever you want, recreation, the whole shebang, should be nice. Okay, yeah, another question, Ken, sorry about this, you mentioned trails and the MJTC's facilitating interconnection of trailways?
Right, yeah, it's, it's an idea, it's being put on the budget as a potential line item to investigate and help to determine ways to interconnect the trails that we've, that have been established. So if you recall, at one of the previous meetings, I talked about the trails being published, I didn't bring a document, but they did go to all the towns and they talked to them about what public trails that they had, and they put together a map of all the trails for hiking, biking, multi-use, and so forth. And it's, it's a pretty extensive map, it covers a lot of areas. And one of the things that I noted at that past meeting is that some of Lunenburg's trails were not on the map, and that was simply because of a lack of communication with certain individuals that they needed to establish meetings with to get the trail maps and hadn't been done and so forth. But independent of that, there's a large collection of trails, but they're relatively spotty, and so they're, they're small in nature and they don't interconnect in a lot of places. And so what they said is that they wanted to study what it would take to come up with some kind of a program to interconnect the trails. And that may come out as a recommendation to allocate some funds out of tip for trail connections, or it may end up being something else, they were yet to determine. I had, I talked to them and I said, you know, one of the ways that we're able to extend and maintain trails is through doing our own lobbying and trying to get money through grants. And I said, it takes a lot of work to do that, so maybe a program that would help towns get grants to extend the trails, because a lot of making trail connections is building bridges and clearing trails and then maintaining them and so forth. And that's something that, you know, that our town is very active in between conservation and Lunenburg snowriders, we do a lot of work on, on that, and there's a lot of grants that go forward with that. And most of the towns in the jurisdiction don't have a tremendous amount of energy that goes into this, and so trail connections are very limited, and that's what they wanted to study.
Yeah, that's, that's great. So, yeah, so just listening to you talk about that, what I'm wondering is, is there, is there, is this information that we should communicate to open space and conservation somehow? I mean, maybe they're watching tonight, but if they're not, would, Adam, would you want to convey these opportunities to them?
Potential opportunity.
Potential opportunity, yes, thank you for clarifying.
I have a comment. On that, I remember, excuse me, when I was going to MJTC, I believe it was Sherri Bean who was heading up the trail project, she had, my understanding of it was that it was a three-phase thing, they had gone through conservation trails in town, accepted trails, and then they had gone through public trails, and then the third phase that they have not gone through yet, in my understanding, was the private trails. So I don't think that they have completed the map, but it is complete as far as public and...
Right, I don't think there's any private trails on the map.
Right, I think that was the third phase that they, they have still to complete.
It's possible, it wasn't mentioned in the meeting, but I could ask about that.
Sherri Bean would be the person to ask about. Also, another comment, you mentioned traffic studies expiring within three years in the Mass DOT's eyes?
Right.
That kind of prompts me to, to mention that we might want to have Whalen Road at the intersection of Summer Street and what is the road that Tri-Town Development's on? Well, either way, any roads that intersect that, that are in Lunenburg should probably have updated traffic counts that, so that they can properly be integrated into that That the traffic counts can be up to date and...
Yeah, I, again, haven't been involved in the design, but a lot of times when some, when a firm is doing DOT designs, they do traffic counts at the time they're doing the 25% design so that they can deter, as part of it, determine whether or not they need to signalize the intersection, or if they can signalize the intersection. I've dealt with projects in the past where they did the design, they were fairly certain they weren't going to be able to signalize, and in the process of crafting the design, they actually found through additional counts that they were able to install signalization in places where they were at 25% selling that they couldn't do that.
Excellent, excellent.
So, again, it's something I can follow up on and just verify, but...
Great, thank you.
So, that brings me back around to, to a previous discussion that we had with regards to Highfield Village, and whether or not, what do we do about situations where a study was done many, many years ago and submitted and already approved, and then where, you know, way past the three-year date, I think that was 2007, I believe, the study was done with traffic data from 2005, I could be slightly off on those numbers, but I think that's about right.
Data was 2007.
Seven was the, okay.
And I guess what confuses me a little bit is that traffic study was included in their EIR, which has a 2013 approval date.
Ah, so it was approved in 2013.
And DOT does a Section 16 finding as part of the EIR, but I'm wondering if they weren't a required reviewer, so they didn't exercise that, that, you know, the data's no good anymore because we're looking at the criteria and we're not required to review this, we're just reviewing it as part of process?
Yeah, it might have been because they're at the, based on that study, there was nothing that was going to be required.
Correct. And I, you can go back and say you have to do a traffic study, or you have to update the numbers because we have concerns. I guess the other thing that we can do, if the MPO is reviewing those numbers or producing numbers biannually, we could get the most recent numbers and compare them to the numbers that they use.
Yeah, I was, I was going to do that, I actually, I have an action to, to reach out to the person that's in charge of those numbers to get the number, I just want to see what the percentage delta is between 2007 and the most recent study to see what kind of impact it would have.
If you're in the same ballpark, you know, even a five or 10% change is probably accounted for in their traffic study. I would say that usually conservative numbers for traffic increase go in the 2% to 3% per year range, so 2007 to 2015, you know, if you see a 10%, 15% change, you're on conservative target, so, and conservative being on the higher side. And that doesn't mean that we shouldn't have them relook at the potential impacts, but it's also leading to they're in the right area anyway, but it's worth looking at and...
Yeah, I'll try to get those numbers before the next meeting then.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Anything on Agricultural Commission, Matt?
Yes, they had their meeting, they had their meeting two weeks ago, they had also a workshop a week ago. The meeting was good, it was, it was rounding out their ideas and thoughts on promoting the 2015 Farmers Market, which is going to open June 28th, Sunday, June 28th, it's going to run through October. They right now currently are actively looking for a market manager. They hope to have application forms available on the Historical Commission's website, which is on the town website, and if it's not there, it was not there this afternoon when I looked, there are contacts for Jeff Mendoza, who is the chair, and Maureen Halligan, who is the clerk. If anybody is interested in pursuing a career in farmers markets, they're looking for a market manager. And they are just making great progress with the Farmers Market, and they've got new regulations, and they're hoping to have a great season.
Location going to stay the same?
Yes, it's going to be in the town center, at the old video.
All right, any questions for Matt?
Proposed hours for the market?
I believe it's 10 to, 10 to 1? 10, 10 to 1?
All right, hey, thanks for the update, that's great. All right, let's turn our attention to our public hearing on the board warrant article. All right. Okay, so, this is the, this is a continuation of the board warrant article regarding the rezoning of a lot on Mass Ave, it's, I guess, 790, 792, that, the lot in that address space there.
Well, it's, it's the rezoning of an area that encompasses portions of two lots.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, so I'll just read the, the hearing announcement briefly. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 13th, 2015, 6:35, Joseph Lot Meeting Room, Town Hall, 17 Main, Lunenburg, Mass, 01462. To amend the zoning map, map 59, parcel 8, 790 to 92, 790 to 792, Mass Ave, owner Edward H. Rowley, Jr., 39 Pinnacle Road, Ellington, Connecticut, 06029. Map 59, parcel 9, 748, Mass Ave, owner Stone Farms Estates Condominium, 748, Mass Ave, Lunenburg, Mass, 01462. And the zoning is to be, is proposals to change the zoning from commercial to limited business slash residential. Copies are on file in the planning office, notice of said hearing has been duly posted in usual posting places. As we indicated earlier, we have the board members as introduced at the beginning of the meeting. So to begin the process here, do we have any minutes, Adam, do we have any minutes, findings or status or relevant reports relative to this, this item we're continuing?
Well, I guess the relevant report would be the email communication I sent you all on Tuesday, April 14th, about the concerns or questions about combining business and residential uses within the district, the commercial district and the limited business residential. And for, for those folks watching at home and us on YouTube tomorrow and in the weeks coming, what happened was, in the commercial zone, many of the uses that were proposed there were by right. So having a residence and a by right use, you have two primary uses. There's a provision within the bylaw under Section 4.11 that says if you get a special permit, any special permit from the zoning board and the planning board, you are allowed to have two principal uses on one lot. So within the limited business residential, which some of the businesses that were mentioned are located, they were located by product of special permit, thus the residential component is allowed as a by right primary use in conjunction with the special permitted use. So the address or the property at 790 was denied these rights based on the fact that the uses they were bringing forward were by right in the commercial district. So that sort of explains it. So if, if the zoning change were to go through, the existing structure on 790 would be able to be used as a combined business and residential, should the business be something that's allowed by special permit within that zone?
Thanks for explaining that, that's very clear, thank you. If it's okay to ask, I noticed that one of the interested parties was here earlier and has since left.
He, I did explain to him what I explained to you, he has not, he didn't express, he was happy to hear that, but he didn't express support or opposition to, to the change.
Okay. Okay, so at this point, I'm gonna go out to the, first I'll go to the board and see, before we take any input from the audience, does anyone have any comments or that they would like to make about, about the article?
Not about the article, but I guess specifically about the, excuse me, about the information provided, about the Stone Farm. I guess I don't understand why the, the residential aspect of the commercial enterprise was not an existing non-conforming thing that could still be lived in and still have a commercial business out of.
My understanding was, in speaking with the building inspector, that the proposals mentioned at the previous hearing were brought up more than two years after the closing of the original business and residential use, so the property in use had been abandoned at the time that they were brought forward to the building inspector, and per MGL, after abandonment of two years, the non-conforming, your existing non-conforming status disappears.
So a residence with a kitchen and a bathroom and six bedrooms is abandoned, and it's considered the same type of a use as a commercial or a business?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Well, there's a residence there with a septic...
Correct.
Well, I assume with a septic system, maybe a well.
Which is not allowed in a commercial zone. So if no one has lived in that residence for a period of two years...
I can see where you're, yep.
It's, it, while the structure is very clearly a residential structure, the use is no longer an allowed existing non-conforming use.
Does anybody have any idea how old that building is?
I believe the barn dates back to the late 1700s, and the residence is considerably newer.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments before we go out to, to the public?
Just that, at surface level, it seems like the proposed change would somewhat help that property be reused in the capacities that the owner expressed at our last meeting. Not sure how he feels about that, but my eyes, it kind of seems like it would help his case, seeing that it is fitted out to be a residence and what have you. So I don't think we're hindering them in their sale of the property and the future use of the property by doing this change. I wish our bylaws were more clear so he didn't have to wait so long to find out why he couldn't get a business in there. And I think moving forward, I would like to look at our limited business district in general to make that more clear, among other things, but...
And, you know, I think that, to be fair to the town, oftentimes, people come and they ask, can I do this? Not, how would I go about doing this, or is there a way to do this, can I do this? And sometimes, you know, the default is just to answer the questions asked and not dig into it for a variety of different reasons, and so, you know, not that that makes it any easier for the applicant to swallow, or, you know, that they've waited this long to get that answer, but I think that that's often, you know, the issue that, the question is asked and it's answered as opposed to delved into.
Because this would, this proposed change would solve his problem of the dual uses, but it makes him have to go through a special permit process to get any real use.
Correct. And I think that you've identified the heart of many of the issues with the protective bylaw, is there, there's a lot of conflict in, you know, if, if it's easy in one way, it puts you into a corner in one place, and if you go somewhere else, it allows you some more flexibility, but you're then subject to a more subjective process.
I think putting this in, in place and getting it rezoned, just, just kind of, as we were, as I was saying in the last meeting, just kind of fixes, to go so far as to say, a mistake that we made in zoning the area the first time around. I think when that area went to limited business, then this property should have been rezoned as limited business with the surrounding areas, and my guess, not having the records, is that, that would have required someone to file for a permit or something, or a special permit, or maybe not even...
Wouldn't have required anything.
Wouldn't have required that, so, I have no idea why, when they rezoned the area to limited business, that this piece of property was not included, because I, I don't see any reason for it to have not been included, and it just seems to make sense that it should be included because of the surrounding areas. And I think that it, it would be much better for it to, to be rezoned, both for the resellable capabilities and what the town would deem as appropriate for that location.
I concur, you're here.
Okay, well, that's, thanks everybody for that discussion, we'll come back to that in a moment. I'd like to go out to the public and see if we have any public comment or feedback on this issue? Are seeing none, are hearing none, I guess? I guess we can wrap it up on the board side, so, yeah, so, would anyone like to...
Basically ready to take a motion to support it or not?
Close the public hearing, take the motion.
Oh, so we got, close the public hearing first, all right. Okay, the discussion, the discussion...
Discussion on the motion.
After the close, after the close of the public...
Correct.
Okay. You don't think the applicant, or the, the interested party's coming back, do you?
It doesn't look like it.
Okay.
All right, well, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing portion of this then.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And we'll entertain motions regarding the article, I guess, is the motion at this point is to whether we...
Support.
To support the article, okay, so, so, so process here be entertain motion to support the article, if we get said motion, then we'll discuss...
Okay.
I should hope we'd support it, we put it on the warrant, didn't we?
I honestly...
Yes, we did.
Okay, yes.
I still support it.
So I'd make a motion to support the article.
Do we still have to, do we have to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
Really?
Because it's a public hearing and it's, it's a zoning article, so it's a change to the zoning map, so the way MGL says, you have to hold the hearing and make your motion and make your vote.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
So I'd make the motion to support the article, don't have the number.
They don't have it there.
I'd support the article as submitted by the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, wait, sorry, sorry. Article 37.
Cancel that. So, I'm gonna ask that we nullify that vote I just called, this discussion before we vote, sorry about that. Any discussion on the article before we vote, I know we've had some discussion right before, does anyone have any other final thoughts?
Do you?
I have some final thoughts, yeah.
That's what we figured.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I guess, I, I think that, you know, there's been good points made about the article, I don't have any problem with the article going before the town to vote on. I, you know, it's, I think there's issues on both sides of the article, I think we had a, I really, I thought it was good that we had some of the interested parties here last time to talk about it, in light of the information, it would have been great to have more feedback from the interested parties to further guide this, so, yeah, so anyways...
So my, my input on that is, we, we did have the interested parties here at, at the last meeting, and they, they spoke extensively about challenges that they had with selling the property because of the way it was zoned.
Yep.
And I'd go so far as to say that had it been zoned as limited, commercial, like we were proposing, that more than likely, they wouldn't have had those challenges in selling the property. So I can't say whether or not they would support this directly, but I do think that as far as the, the examples that they provided to us at the last meeting, pretty much all of those examples, with the exception of the gas station, would have been something that could have gone to get a special permit to be used for that purpose, which would, would have enabled the, the sale. So, I think that, I would assert that it is in their best interest as far as their ability to sell the property, based upon the testimony that they made at the last meeting, that they would support the rezoning as well.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's a good point, and I get we've come from a lot of conditions there.
Well, like I said, I'm asserting it based upon the testimony at the last meeting.
Exactly, exactly.
They're not, they're not at this meeting, so I can't say what their current feeling is. But that was the point that I made at the last meeting, was that all of those uses that they complained about not being able to sell the property of, because of, I felt at the last meeting, were probably because it was not zoned as, you know, the, the limited use. And had it not been zoned commercial, they probably could have gone forward with those. And that's why we asked to have that verified, that, that indeed was the case, that the commercial zoning restricted the dual use of the, of the property. And it clearly is a house, and it clearly is a property that could also host a business. So it, it's a very good property for the, for the combined use, use case.
Gotcha, yeah. So I guess the, the only point I want to, I would make on this, so I think we've heard, you know, between the, the public hearing, and I think there was discussion of it in the Board of Selectmen and whatnot, I mean, I think there's a strong case for, you know, kind of making our zoning more rational and bringing the parcels with, that are really within the space defined by the zone into the same, make them all regulated by the same under, underlying zoning. I think, you know, so there, in, like you said, based on the input at the last meeting, it would seem that there were some, some more potential opportunities on the limited business side versus the commercial, although there probably are some on the commercial side that are more straightforward than in limited business as well, so it's, it's a little hard to say, but I guess the, the one thing is, that the limited business zoning is, one thing we've learned, I think, is that it is kind of mysterious and maybe a little messier, and certainly less by right than the commercial zoning. And so I, I guess, you know, hopefully, like you said, what we've discovered in this public hearing is that the proposed change is something that may actually be good for the applicant, and maybe that's, that's great, and I certainly support putting the motion before, before the town, I'm certainly not opposed to the article. I guess the, you know, the, some of the points raised by the Board of Selectmen and others in the, and by the applicant in the process was, there was a sense of, I guess, I think partly because of the lack of clarity in the underlying zoning, at least initially there was a sense of hardship with the zoning change happening, that certainly, I don't think, just because there's a sense of hardship, yes, it is with, it is certainly our prerogative to put this article forward and do it, but I guess, I guess the reason why I'm babbling on is, I think it would probably have been a better situation overall if we had better, better zoning for the limited business, if the limited business zoning was cleaner and clearer, we, I think the, the transition of the, of the parcels or lots to the new zoning might, might be even, even smoother than it may or may not be, or whatever, I think at least initially it would, it might have gone a little smoother. But that's my only real comment on it, I mean, I think it's, I think it's good that this issue's been brought up, I think, you know, obviously, making the zoning more effective in town is an important part of what we do, and I think this is a, you know, a sensible proposal, certainly to discuss, so, yeah, that's, that's my only comment, so I just, I just point out that it's, you know, what I've taken away from the, the public hearing process on this is, there's, there's, there's some value, there's some good points on both sides of this, depending on one's perspective, I guess, so. All right, that's all I got, so, any other discuss, for discussion, any other discussion?
Nope. No, there's a motion on the floor.
Ready to vote?
Yes, all right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. So let's move on to, what do we got here? New business development status. All right, so we have town meeting on May 2nd, we have town elections May 16th. There is a definitive subdivision on 50 Elmwood Road, and we have a verbal update for that.
So the developer of 50 Elmwood called me last week and asked me to come out and have a look at what they've done and sort of talk about what his next steps were. I don't know if you guys have taken a ride by there recently. He's got binder course down, and he's, at this point, probably has both detention basins dug, and is either seeding or preparing to seed them, because he was out there working on them when I was there last week, and said that he was, he was close to having seed down. He's moving along pretty well, and it's a clean subdivision right now. He's got piles, I mean, it looks like a construction site, but everything seems to be in good order.
Yeah, it looks good.
He was going to bring a stump grinder out and really rip through that pile of brush and stumps on the left-hand side. But it's, and, you know, I don't think he's going to have any runoff issues there. It really is sandy, sandy soil, and he indicated that there was a significant amount of gravel, and they got down about 20 feet and weren't even close to hitting water when they did their original test holes. So what he's, he's preparing is construction cost estimates to put up a bond, and I expect that for the May 11th meeting, he'll put a request in for, I think he said he's going to ask for two lots to be released based on the existing work completed. So I encourage you all between now and then to have a ride by, pull on in, you know, drive the road. It, you know, he doesn't have curbs in, he doesn't have...
He does have the curbs of the street, and the granite curbs are in there now.
He didn't have them in when I was up there.
Out there now.
He was, you know, he said he was going to wait on the radii up at the back on the cul-de-sac, but he was, he said they were going to come and do the ones at the street. And I think when you pull in on the left-hand side, he said he was probably going to pull that berm and try and work on seeding adjacent to the house. But even that, you know, I think the work he's done may qualify him for two lots, if you folks think that it's appropriate. He still has seven more that you can hold on to him until he gets a bond up, but that's something we can discuss further when, when he gets stuff in. But my, it was, it was nice to see the first subdivision I'm dealing with here moving along nicely with somebody who seems to understand doing the site work and what he needs to do.
Great, thanks for the update.
That's excellent.
Okay, so we have a...
The remainder of the new business development statuses are no report. The action file is, well, we have maybe two reports for action files. Stormwater management? Yeah, this is going to be a big topic about town in the coming 12 or so months. Well, probably for the next 50 years, but it'll probably be hotter than normal for the next 12 months or so. As you may or may not be aware, the town of Lunenburg is a Phase 2 community, which means we operate a municipal separate stormwater sewer system. So we'll call it MS4, because that's the EPA's fancy name for it, and it's much easier to say, which means that we have catch basins and pipes and outfalls that collect and distribute our rainwater from our streets and parking lots. Because we own and operate this system, we are currently subject to a Phase 2 MS4 permit. It's a five-year permit that was issued in 2003, and they are just coming up on, yes, I see you doing the math, they're just coming up on the renewal for the second permit, and the requirements are much more significant than they were in 2003. 2003 involved a lot of mapping and identifying where your catch basins and outfalls were, basically telling the EPA that you were cleaning out said catch basins and properly disposing of the hazardous waste that sand becomes after it's been on the road all winter, and telling the public that stormwater is a good thing, and that you shouldn't dump your oil down the catch basin, and all that kind of good stuff. And a lot of stuff that the planning board does pre and post-construction monitoring and ensuring that their stormwater is appropriate for the sites, you know, that everybody's following the guidelines. So coming up, the town will have to reapply for their permit. We won't have to probably do, this board won't have to do much for the application process, but I think that it's appropriate that we start to look at our rules and regulations. I know that there's a couple of instances where storm scepters or other, what are they called, Matthew, cyclone force separators?
Well, they're all, they're all, well, storm scepter's...
Storm scepter's, it's a brand name, it's like Nike, but...
It's a, it's a removal.
Yeah, they, they spin the water and they pull all the sand and other suspended solids out, where the planning boards required these to be installed as part of a stormwater system, and, you know, they're great, they're functional, they do a job that has to be done in a very small area that otherwise you have to put a sediment forbay or a series of other things in.
I interrupted. We have not required that they put them in. In fact, on the Elmwood subdivision specifically, I requested that they look into the low-impact development.
Okay.
Which is the swales. It's a requirement of the stormwater regulation.
Yes.
That they have some type of treatment.
Yes, that they have, I'm sorry, I was under the impression that the, well, the planning board approved that they be installed. And they require a vacuum truck to maintain them, because you can't use the normal, you know, stuffy clam catcher that you get at the, you know, when you give your kid a quarter and they go and pull the stuffed animal out of the machine, because there's all sorts of little parts in there, and once they stick that thing in there, it no longer spins the water the way it's supposed to. So you stick the hose down, you vacuum all the junk out of the bottom. Town doesn't own one of these. It's a quarter million or more dollar piece of equipment, so the town's probably not going to buy one. So just working with the DPW to put together a set of standards for stormwater that would make sense, that are going to be able to be maintained properly, and, you know, maybe look into some of these low-impact developments practices, and how the DPW would take to them, what they think is reasonable that they can maintain, and maybe putting together an acceptable design handbook to go along with the rules and regs that says, you can do low-impact development, here's the designs you have to use that we'll accept, and, you know, you take them and scale them to your development. So, you know, the board, I'm sure, has lots of thoughts on this. This is something that we met with the Board of Selectmen, Conservation Commission, the town manager, other interested parties. There's a lot more to stormwater than what we do. There's some discussion about how we fund the town's portion of maintaining a stormwater system. The new permit is going to require things like wet and dry weather monitoring of outfalls. And so, you know, on a hot July day, some, someone is going to have to go humping out into the woods and find every outfall and see if it's dripping or not. And if it's dripping, we have a problem, because clearly, there's not a lot of stormwater in the middle of July, and we have to figure out where that's coming from, so there's a trace-back problem. And we also have to do water quality sampling. And the thing with the water quality sampling is, we don't know how much, we don't know how often, and we don't really know what the cost is, because you have to send it to a lab, they do all their fancy labby stuff to it, and if there comes back a problem, then how quickly do we have to trace that back, and how do we trace it back, and how do we find the problem? So there's, you know, that specter of the unfunded mandate boogeyman hanging out there, and, you know, how big is he, and what impact is he going to have on the town?
Does that fall into the, into the realm of the DPW?
It does.
I know that as far as putting together a stormwater management plan or proposal or guideline, definitely falls on the planning board's shoulder. That's something that we should work with the DPW to define, but, I mean, it is their responsibility to monitor these things.
It is, and, you know, I don't bring this up as it's something the planning board has to start to worry about, but it all works in conjunction.
Right.
And, you know, there was some discussion about, do we stop accepting stormwater systems with roads? Do we stop accepting roads? You know, do we make people maintain their own? And, you know, there's always the issue of the town eventually owns it at some point. So do we eat the cost of it and know what's going on with it, or do we just hope people are good little doobies and that we're not going to have the impact of that? So, you know, that's a policy discussion the board may want to consider. So, and, you know, sort of a final note on stormwater. The DPW director and myself went to MRPC last week, and we met with some folks from the transportation section, and they are putting together their unified pro, UPWP.
Unified Planning Work Program.
I always forget what the first P stands for.
Yeah. And there is, there is potential funding in there for stormwater.
Yeah, and, you know, they were sort of kicking around ideas, you know, they wanted to come out and help us map all of the stormwater facilities on federal aid roads. The town's done that. That was part of our original permit. So, you know, we got to talking, and their thinking was potentially creating an app that allows for information collection and maintenance logging of the catch basins and their pertinent pipes. So when someone goes out, they can have a smartphone or a tablet, and they can say, all right, I'm at this catch basin, and it logs the GPS coordinates, and it has pull-down menus so they can say, has a sump, doesn't have a sump, sump full, or, you know, moderately full, whatever, has a hood, doesn't have a hood, pipes look in good shape, and they can also say, catch basin cleaned on this date, this is the volume, to sort of help the towns, and not just the town of Lunenburg, but all of their 22 communities, collect this data, have a long-term log, because currently, the EPA is kind of taking everybody's word for it. You know, you fill out an annual report for your permit that says, yeah, we clean our catch basins this often. But they don't actually ask for any real backup data. And, you know, I'm sure a lot of communities give it just because they don't want the EPA coming, but this would provide the ability to potentially track it, and what this app might look like, and this was, you know, we met on Thursday, so this was all kind of spitballed as we sat around and talked about it, but it's, it's something that is getting beyond just the communities. And I got the impression that the gentleman from MRPC only had a peripheral knowledge of Phase 2. So it's something that they haven't had to deal with, that they're starting to get into because they see the impact it's having on communities. So I guess this is really just a, let's start thinking about this. You know, I know Matthew was at the meeting, and he had asked the last time around if we could put this on the agenda and start to talk about it, so that's my, my quick sales pitch.
Thank you for having put there.
Any, any things, Adam? That's a really, really good, good picture of what's going on there. Any discussion or comments or questions about stormwater?
I have a question to start off with, a follow-up question I had requested, the maps that were presented at that joint meeting from DPW, and then I believe the request went back through you, because I had asked it directly, but do we, have we received those, or?
I haven't seen them. I guess I misunderstood that communication. I thought, I was under the impression that Jack said he was going to get them to you, and that in the future, it should come through me. I'll follow, I have some other things to follow up with him on, so I'll add that to it.
That would be important, because he did map all of our outfalls for that previous permit, so they are all...
And honestly, I imagine that it's probably somewhere in a digital form, so if I can get that, I'll just distribute it.
That would be perfect. Thank you.
So the UPWP was, I think they allocated like $35,000 to do a stormwater study for Gardner, and there was a $40,000 block that could potentially go for a stormwater study in Lunenburg, but is that, is it that $40,000 block that they're looking at using for building the application to, to do the analysis?
We didn't actually talk money. They said that they were putting together their task list for their, yep, for their October, for their October 1 start, and they said that they were going to start looking at that. I would guess that if that's what they've put together, then, then that would be what they're talking about. And they talked with, with Jack and I about being a test community and sort of doing shakedown on the app, and, you know, sort of running through it and seeing how it works, how the people who work for the DPW take to it, you know, the transition from paper to digital, you know, that's oftentimes one of the barriers to going to this type of system. A lot of communities are going to digital permitting, and both residents and longtime employees are resistant.
So I was just going to ask, that was my follow-up. Is there an incentive for going? So is the permitting process going to be easier if you use the app to file your records on a yearly basis? Or?
No. I mean...
I was just wondering if there's an incentive.
The EPA doesn't make anything particularly easy, and the, I think that where it could potentially make it easier is internally. You know, I, I believe that what they do is they fill out a paper log when they do their catch basin cleaning. So there's a potential that a slip gets lost. And, you know, I, the EPA has much bigger fish to fry than Lunenburg for missing one catch basin on one of their required cleanings, but it just, it organizes everything in a way that when it comes time to do that, you know, a couple of clicks, and, all right, here's my catch basin reports. And I think that it has the potential, and, you know, again, it depends a lot on functionality, it depends on a lot of things, to create a scoring system. If you have a catch basin that you're removing, you know, a yard of debris from annually, and you have one that you're removing a five-gallon bucket from, you know, maybe the one that you're pulling a yard from, you're maintaining on a quarterly basis instead of an annual, and the other one, you go back once a year and you just clean it out. So you can, and it may create a maintenance tag, you know, hoods missing, pipes crushed, the bricks collapsed, whatever happens to be the issue. And again...
Yeah, just brainstorming, I understand.
Yeah, I think that there's, there's a lot of potential to it, but what's the capacity of it?
So they're going to allocate the money to the task force to determine what they're going to do first, or are they just going to move forward with this?
It wasn't clear to me. They were going to talk to their GIS department about what they can do, how fast they can do it, because their GIS department, I guess, develops apps for, has developed apps for housing and some other community development side projects, so they're looking at just being a little bit more innovative on trying to do it for both transportation and community development.
Adam, are you aware that we, that we contacted with CAI for our GIS system?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, CAI is currently digitizing our zoning map.
I will just comment that the majority of our storm systems are along the roadways, which are arguably in poor shape and are extremely underfunded for the past many, many, many years. We've got a pavement management program, I think, that was created four or five years ago, and is over $10 million, I think, I think the last figure I heard was over $12 million, underfunded.
I would believe that that's a...
So, I mean, that's, that's lending to the situation we find ourselves in.
It certainly is, and, you know, when a, when a road is in, in poor condition, it allows for additional and excessive debris, and it's, you know, it's a balancing act.
We also, we have, in the general bylaw, 6.7 and 6.8, the stormwater management, and then these... And then the stormwater management for municipal, for the MS4.
Yeah, those are actually in the protective bylaw.
Right.
And they, and they, you know, and they should be in the general bylaw, I believe. Because they shouldn't be zoning issues, they should be a general issue.
What's the difference between general and protective?
My understanding is the protective bylaw is your zoning bylaws. And then there should be a series of general bylaws.
Okay, so we only do have one bylaw though, correct?
No, there's a, there's a, there's a general bylaw for the town of Lunenburg. Yes. And that's where, that's where I believe your stormwater should be located.
Oh. So the bylaw that we checkably refer to as the bylaw is a protective bylaw and it's actually just a zoning bylaw.
Correct.
And we also have a general bylaw?
You do.
Oh.
And that.
APD went into the general bylaw.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that does things like the policies and procedures for the board of selectmen. They have policies and procedures, but there's also general bylaws that govern pawnbrokers. And, uh, I believe, uh, there's one on this year's warrant for the consumption of marijuana in public. Uh, so there, the general bylaws are laws that apply to any and all facets of the community. Whereas the protective or zoning bylaws only apply, apply to property and development of property.
Well, then I agree with you that these belong in the general. Yes, definitely. But, uh, the reason I brought them up is because that they were written and they're, we, we are the SPGA or we are the.
Yes, and, and that's, when we start going through the protective bylaws, we'll go over that. They, um, the, these are, these were a requirement of the 2003 permit. The institution of illicit discharge bylaws and.
And I'm thinking that's probably about the time that these were propagated. Right. So I'm wondering, have we ever had a stormwater management permit issued?
Probably not.
Really? It says anything over one acre of disturbance?
Unless you're rolling it in with other permits.
Okay.
And, you know, quite honestly, once you get over one acre, you need an EPA general construction, construction general permit.
If the EPA is made aware of it, right?
Ye- yes.
I understand.
And, you know, usually if you're clearing over more than an acre and you're doing something, somebody will call the town and the town, a lot of times will require, and, you know, construction general permits are, you know, a dime a dozen.
And we've recently had some problems though from people and I'm wondering if those people ever got what the permit they were required to get.
Are we currently having problems with them? Cause I'm not shy about calling the EPA.
Okay, we, we need to talk about it after the meeting.
Yeah, co- contact me and I'll, we can.
Certainly.
Any other, any other thoughts on stormwater before we go to the next topic? No? Okay. All right. Uh, the next topic on the action file is the scenic road, uh, for Flat Hill and Northfield Road.
Uh, Adam, do you want to talk about that one? You have.
We have two warrant articles for scenic roads, Northfield and Flat Hill. Come vote for them. They're pretty. No, i- it's, it's the same thing that we've talked about. It's everything within the right of way. Stonewalls and trees are really the, the heart and soul of scenic roads in New England. Uh, and this is intended to allow for development while being contextually sensitive to the trees and stone walls that exist along these roads that, you know, probably predate a lot of the houses in town, um, as a functional roadway in one way or another. Uh, so it, it's not burdensome. It doesn't take any rights away from people who live along these roads. Uh, it doesn't change, um, the status of anybody's property or the road itself. Uh, and I think that, uh, when we were at the board of selectmen, there was concern that the current fines are miniscule and, and aren't necessarily, uh, a deterrent to people violating the bylaw. I've talked to some colleagues across the state and, uh, I have some ideas. Uh, if we don't currently have a bylaw, we can certainly write a general bylaw. Uh, and we can put some pretty significant fines, uh, and penalties in place, including replacement of vegetation uh, in caliber inch, not one for one. Uh, which can, you know, create an expensive and problematic thing for someone who, who violates. So, uh, that's something that as we go forward and, and start looking at things, we can, we can talk a little more about.
All right. Thanks for the update on that. And yeah, uh, as you guys saw the email, he's got a, a nice presentation to summarize some of the key issues around the, uh, scenic road bylaw that'll be before town meeting to help illustrate the, how it works.
I did see that and I liked the graphics. Um, I would make one comment though, that I don't think Mass Ave doesn't even have a 52 foot right of way.
No, uh, doesn't have a 52 foot? I bet, I bet it does have.
It says 50.
Oh, yeah. And.
But either way, I, the paved, the paved width of, of, of 32 feet?
Is probably excessive. And, you know, I, I think it's less about the numbers and it's more about the illustration. Uh, and I'm.
I don't disagree and I, I commend you for the, for the graphic. It, it looks good, but it's not representative of.
No, I, and I, that I totally agree with. I looked very hard for something and all of the ones that had numbers that seemed right were black and white and were just kind of line drawings. And, you know, if I put it in front of you, you guys would say, oh, this is great. I understand this. But to project it on the wall at town meeting.
I get you.
Uh, you know, the colors and the trees make a big difference. And, uh, I think as long as I understand that it's not representative and I can express that, it's.
You don't want to break out the Microsoft Paint?
No.
Yeah, you could cut and paste graphics too over these to change the dimensions.
What's that? I could.
Cut and paste graphics to change the dimension.
You know, the, the dimensions are less important in that scenario than the actual graphic.
Yeah, it does, does look good. It's helpful.
It's, it's all about the, this is how the road is laid out. This is what we're talking about. Uh, I think that's sort of what Paula Bertram wanted, uh, on a much more micro scale. You know, she talked about, uh, at the selectman's meeting wanting to have, uh, the full, uh, maybe it was here, I don't remember, uh, the full length of the road and show the layout as compared to the traveled way. So that people would understand what was included and that kind of graphic just doesn't exist.
If we had a layout book, it would be.
Right. If I had a million dollars.
Right.
All right. Any other, uh, comment, questions on scenic road?
Thanks for the research on the, uh, potential fees that we could look at. And I think that'd be something in the next year.
Yeah. I mean, the bylaw says fines up to $300, but, you know, you can put other punitive measures in that are not cash fine.
Yeah. Cause suddenly someone cutting down a hundred-year-old tree or more is.
I mean, you're never going to replace that hundred-year-old tree, but.
Yeah.
If you get 60 small trees there, they're gonna, you know, that number adds up quickly.
And you're also not going to be able to find a replacement in kind for that tree?
No.
All right. Uh, well, that concludes the things we have reports on in the action file. Notices and communications, um, there's a cover sheet that's scanned to members. We probably saw it, yeah, you probably got it in your email there. All right. Uh, so meeting schedule. All of our, all meetings will be at town hall at 6:30 unless otherwise indicated, May 2nd. Um, so we have an issue about scheduling a board meeting. Do we want to schedule a board meeting for Saturday prior to town meeting? Would you recommend that? Are you expecting we might get some late breaking news, something we need to weigh?
I sure hope not. I mean, my, it was mentioned to me, uh, by Marjorie that historically the board had met briefly prior to town meeting. Uh, so being the new kid on the block, I'm going to pose it to the board as to whether or not they'd want to. You know, to me, 8:30 or nine o'clock is really kind of the same number on a Saturday.
So, so we have taken positions, I think, on all the things that.
You have.
For us to take positions on, which is great. And I commend the board for, for diligence there. Do we, as far as presentations go, just off the top of my head, my understanding is you are presenting.
Oh, yeah, I'll do the song and dance for, for the articles.
He's doing the song and dance.
That's my, that's, my understanding is that's, that's something that I would do.
Okay. So, so that's covered. So we got that going.
Yeah.
So is there anything, uh, so the only, is there anything we haven't taken a position on, like from another board that I?
I don't think there's anything from another board that you need to take a, a stand on. I mean, the only thing I can think of is you guys bringing me coffee.
Ah, okay. Yeah.
Every week.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
When, uh, when this is, uh, it is brought up for a town vote, we have all the amendments that we want to make on the floor. You make those amendments, I presume? Do you actually?
I do not, because I am not a town meeting member.
So how do we do that? How, how do we go through and take all these redlined items?
Are you coming?
Yes, I'm.
You could stand up and say that, you know, and now I'm glad you brought that up because it's something.
Yeah, cause it's like, we have a lot, a lot of little detailed things in here.
All of that stuff that I sent around is all correct. Nobody has any issues. I didn't miss anything.
I didn't see anything that you missed. It looked correct.
Because we're going to print handouts.
It actually looked more extensive than, uh.
Well, because there's.
What I thought we had, had previously talked about, but.
There's council's recommendations.
Right, yeah. And I saw that in some places where they looked for clarifications and other things.
So.
And the clarifications looked to be in alignment with what I was thinking.
Yeah. And when I get up and do the presentation, I will mention you have a handout that reflects the changes required by council and one or two clarifications that the planning board would like to make an amendment to. And then I would expect, hope, ask that a member of the board would stand up and say, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that we make the alterations as outlined in the handout or, you know, it, this is going to be a learning experience for me because moderators are like gold tenders. They're all a little different and they're all a little distinctive in the way that they operate. So some of them will accept that. Some of them will want you to go through and read each change.
Which is feasible in this case.
Yes, but I, so I don't know how Mr. Murphy will approach it. You know, I, I worked with a moderator who honestly, depending on his mood at the time, would say, don't read it all. I want to get home before midnight. Or yes, I want you to read every word. So just be prepared whoever makes the motion.
The handout is going to be the whole thing with the redlined marks?
Correct. It'll be the whole bylaw.
Color handout, whole bylaw, line throughs with red line, what's, we've been at.
Correct.
So it'll be crystal clear to everybody.
And I'm going to create a cover sheet for each handout.
Okay.
That says, you know, what the article is and I'm, I might do a quick, you know, just description of the article. Sort of, this is what it is. So if someone, I can't imagine anybody didn't sit down and read their warrant cover to cover. But if they haven't, uh, we'll give them the, you know, the quick version.
Okay. All right. That sounds very reasonable.
So, so yeah, Ken, if you.
Anybody, all right. So are we assigning this to me? Cause if it's assigned to me, I'm going to want to talk to our moderator.
Well, I would have loved to have jumped on it for you, but I cannot be at town meeting this year. As, uh, I have to go to a retreat for getting married in the Catholic church.
Lucky you.
Scheduled months ago, didn't even realize it was town meeting date.
What's the town meeting date again? May?
Second.
Second.
Saturday.
It's this coming Saturday.
Still be praying for you guys, but, uh, I can't be there in person to help.
Uh, and Ken, what I'll say is Thursday afternoon, we're having a pre-town meeting. Uh, the town manager, the moderator, council and, uh, whatever department heads decide to show up. So if you have questions for the moderator, uh, if you'd like me to ask them, I can. If not, I can, you know, pass along his information if you don't have it and you can try and get in touch with him.
Well, that's what I would ask. How do we, how do we handle this?
The amendment.
I, I, you know, he gives me the language to how to request the amendment. I can stand up and request the amendment. Um, I'd just like to have it pre-scripted so that we do it the way that he wants it done.
And we're not trying to fumble through it.
Yeah. I just, you know, I don't want to say, no, that's not the way we do it, Mr. Chen.
So just one comment on that topic. You, in your little cover sheet, will you have a little burp explaining the intent of the amendments? Cause I think it's pretty precise.
Yes, yes.
You know, it's cleanup legal language and rectify a few minor corrections to harmonize, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Um, yeah, and I would recommend you speak to that too as well.
Okay, you'll verbally mention it. Okay.
Awesome. Um, just, you know, I think mostly you have been there. We typically sit like in the upper right near the, up at the front, on the right as you face the stage, kind of together if possible, just in case there is some need to.
Caucus.
Caucus mid-meeting or whatever. So yeah, okay. Um, anything else? Thanks for bringing that up about the amendments. Is there anything else that we have, um, going into this?
No.
Okay. So it sounds like, uh, meeting at nine is fine. It doesn't sound like we have a lot to do at 8:30. Maybe come at a quarter of and sit down or whatever, but I don't think we need to officially, do we need to open?
No, it, it doesn't sound like it. I mean, if, if you guys are comfortable with the positions you've taken, I mean, we meet enough. I, I don't think that we need to have an extra half hour Saturday morning session. Everybody sleep an extra half hour and.
Forget Adam's coffee.
Show up ready to go.
Don't forget Adam's coffee.
Oh, Adam won't forget Adam's coffee. Don't worry about it.
Okay. Um, all right. So that covers the town meeting. Uh, on May 11th, we have two hearings scheduled right now. One's High Field Village. And the other is 270 Electric Ave, LTN Realty Trust Self-Storage Facility. And those will be followed by a regular meeting. Memorial Day, we have no meeting. Um, any public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to go to board comment. Seeing none of that, I'm going to go to member issues.
I, I have, I'm not a member, but I have an issue. Can, can we combine board comment and member issues into one agenda item?
I thought we already talked about that.
We did.
Yeah.
Cause I asked the same question. I'm like, I don't understand what the difference is between these two things. So.
Well, in future, we will do so.
That sounds good. Yeah. Yeah. I don't, yeah, I don't know what the difference is. I mean, member issue sounds more personal, but.
Well, board comments slash issues.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, right. I don't, I'm fine. I don't care.
You could say board member comments slash issues.
Yeah, member issues.
We'll come up with a creative way to phrase it for you.
Yeah. I mean, just to make sure people, the good, the only, I mean, I have no problem combining. The one thing that's, member issue is kind of seems like something that jogs your memory to say, oh yeah, I'm going to miss the next two meetings because, you know, I'm mourning, you know, I don't know.
For whatever reason, you know.
We could, we could knock it down by two and just say, comment, public, board. That's it.
I guess I do have a member issue though. Just a question real quick. Do we ever discuss if we're going to clean up the A and R thing at all? Or do we get shot down from the other boards? They still want to see it and circulate it for two weeks?
We got mixed comments. Everybody still wants to see it. Um.
And they see it after? I mean, legally, they can't deny it, right?
Well, legally, there's no requirement for them to see it, is there?
Correct.
It's, it's, it's a state approval not required thing.
And I.
My point is even if they had an issue, we can't deny it based on that issue, right?
No. Correct. And, you know, the one that there was the septic issue, um, on Mass Ave. I failed to register the letter with the town clerk, so it was approved by constructive approval. I went over one day and they were closed and I just never made it back within the 21 days. And they, you know, so they got a constructive approval. Again, I go back to the requirement that it be filed at a board meeting as really the, the big hiccup. Um, so I guess my suggestion is that, you know, we look at the rules and.
Especially part of as we look at rules and regs?
Yeah, I guess the problem with that is, you know, we have the stormwater issue that we want to work with the DPW. I don't want to post multiple hearings to change the rules and regs because that's money out of our budget and it's not inexpensive to do a public hearing. But, so I guess my suggestion is we limp through it and concentrate on doing the rules and regs first. And then really start focusing on the bylaws. Because I think in theory, uh, most of the rules and regs aren't crazy. Uh, but I think that we can neaten up and get some efficiency out of the process. Uh, and, you know, maybe look at some of the other design elements and information in there and. some of the other design elements and information in there and maybe bulk it up a little bit or just, you know, again, make it a little bit more contemporary.
Yeah.
Without too much trouble and theoretically have something ready for fall or early winter. You know, and a lot of that is dependent on you guys. And I don't say that in, you know, you have to do more work, but understanding it, being comfortable with it, and being willing to go forward. And I don't want you to move forward with something you're not comfortable with, but just defining what we want to do, nailing it down and, and moving on.
Okay.
And I think that the last process with the APD and the village, we did a good job with that. So I think we can do it. But they're your rules and regs, and I'm going to give you my advice and my thoughts, but ultimately, you have to accept them.
Okay.
Sounds logical.
And appreciate them. It's kind of a Yoda-like figure in that sense.
I like to think of myself as the Dungeon Master. I don't get involved, I just give you guys direction.
Excellent.
All right.
All right.
Oh, can we, can we possibly get a copy of the general bylaw?
Yeah, I can, I can get that for you.
Because I was only provided with the two when I
I don't think the general bylaw has much application to the planning board, but it's a public document, so yeah, we can get that for you.
Or is that something, it's probably something I could get.
I, I mean, I have a copy of it. I can, I can email it around. It's
That'd be great, thank you.
Two and a half minutes of work.
That was my only member issue.
All right, well, I take, if that's, if that's all. Just one last thing, actually, related to town meeting. Joanna had circulated some email. Have you heard anything from her in the last couple of weeks about?
No.
No? Okay. All right, entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Didn't want to have a discussion.
No discussion.
I think someone's giving you a hard time. Stop the vote, I still, I want to get my point made.
Hey, come on, man. What are you talking about?
And much more. The gift, toy, and flower shops at Russell's feature birthday, anniversary, special occasion, and wedding needs. Russell's on Route 20 in Wayland. For info, you